Call this meeting in order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeremy, if you're ready, call the roll.
Mr. Crowe here. Mrs. Dorsh?
Here.
Mrs. Lee? Mr. Fuji?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
All right, brings us to item five, the minutes. It's recommended the board approve minutes for September 10th and 17th, 2020 regularly scheduled meetings. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fuji. Is there a second? Thank you, Leanna. Comments or feedback on the minutes for me?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. I would like to welcome Jacob tonight. I wasn't able to make it to his first meeting, so we're really excited to have you here and have you here representing our students, especially this year when we don't get to see as many kids here, so it's nice to have you as that connect them, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully enjoy it and welcome and can't believe you're a senior already. Wanted to share just a few things this evening first, and as the projector's warming up there, wanted to share just a little bit on how things are going. We're obviously just finishing up the first quarter, first day of the second quarter was today already, which is so hard to believe. And so, of course, folks are wondering, you know, how things are going with the pandemic and with the kids being back in school. So did want to point out, make sure all the board members and our community members are aware that if you go to our website, you can see right there at the top, the BWI COVID-19 dashboard. Mr. Cooper's gonna click there. And our school district nurse, Megan Truax, actually keeps this updated. And this is the part that we are required to report by the state, which is active cases. So right now, you can see we currently have zero active cases. And so far this year, just to share, we had two that were counted at the very beginning of the year by the state. They were students who had not been in class during that contagious period, but school had started, so they were counted by the state. And then we've had one student who was actually a virtual student that we counted. So again, not in our buildings, but is considered one of our students, so we were required to report that as a case. So so far, we've had three cases for the state's criteria that we need to count. And as you can see currently, if you go to the state site, they do have a cumulative total, but we keep on there the current. And then we also put what percentage that is, because I think that's important for families to know, too, is how many people there are, but then what percentage of our students and staff would that be as well. So that's where you can find that information. If anybody asks you, please point them in that direction. Megan has some information on there as well, as far as what's counted and how people will be reported on there. And then also on our website, other information. If you have questions about medical things in general with COVID, you can find that information on there under the reopening plans. I wanted to point that out. But so far, everything's going really well. Yes, knock on wood. Again, I know we've said this before, but I just really want to thank pretty much everybody involved in making this happen. Our kids have done a phenomenal job. You see some nodding with the staff members there in the audience, but it's just really amazing. From kindergarten through 12th grade, the kids have just been really, really doing a phenomenal job of following the protocols, doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I've heard time and time that they're just so appreciative to be back in school, that they're, you know, they're willing to follow those guidelines. And so we really appreciate that. And then next, of course, like to thank our staff. They've done an awesome job. I know, you know, obviously in any situation like this, there was a little bit of apprehension when we first came back, but they have done an amazing job of adapting and adjusting and taking care of our students. And so just really appreciate that. And then obviously, just our whole community and everybody kind of doing what they need to do. So hopefully, we continue to get through this. I am getting a lot of questions on switching back options, especially we're getting a lot of requests to switch from the virtual to the in-person. And we have made some allowances for that, as we said we would at the beginning, if there are extenuating circumstances in some of those situations, maybe that a student has an IEP or is an English language learner, or there might be an extenuating circumstance in the home, or there's been a change in a job situation, or a duck in the family in a couple cases. So we have allowed for some of those switches. Overall, we're trying to provide support, especially the upper levels, if the kids aren't doing well with the tutor. And then looking to allow folks to make that request for the semester. And the reason for that is we had to base our staffing off of the number of kids that are in each option. So it becomes very challenging to just keep switching people during the semester. So there will be something that will go out at the beginning of November, so here in a couple of weeks. And it will have directions on how people can request. So if you're currently doing virtual and you want to move to in-person or vice versa, you'll be able to make that request in November. Those will be due by Thanksgiving. Again, directions coming soon. And then we will make those changes. That'll give us a little bit of time at the semester break, but it's really hard to change, especially the secondary level semester classes and things like that schedule. So thank you for your patience with that. And I think that's all I had on the COVID update, unless there are any questions from the board. Okay. Next up, this is the part, one of the parts of the agenda that I enjoy the most, which is hearing from our buildings. And I think especially with everything we're dealing with, with the pandemic. And then obviously, we've had a lot that we've been dealing with in the last several months with construction. It's just really nice to take a moment and kind of ground ourselves in our purpose and why we're here. And that is to educate our kids in our buildings. And so nice to have our principals come in and share what their kids are doing. And so at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Kate Toma, who is our principal at General Rosecrans Elementary, to come up. And she's going to share about her building and about her goals for the year.
Thank you for letting me come and talk with you. And since I couldn't bring, since I couldn't bring students with me this year, I'm bringing them to you through photos. So going on in the background, you're gonna get to see some of the amazing faces at GRE. And what I'm excited to share with you about tonight is kind of the relaunching or reopening of our library at GRE. We have been maxed out in space at GRE for the last several years. And so the library was used for our STEM classroom. And so this year, we are super excited to get that back open and get kids reading books. So I'm gonna walk with you a little bit how I did it with my staff, and they can kind of tell you how it went, too. But if you can take yourself back to a book that you read as a child, for me, it was The Giving Tree. And I remember, who gave it to me? It was my grandma Margie. And I remember what she wrote on the cover of The Giving Tree. And I remember how it felt when she read it to me and what it was like to hold that book in my hand. And then when I first became a teacher, that book went into my classroom. And my students would bring this book up to me and say, who's Grandma Margie and who's Katie? Because that's what they called me when I was little. So it just is something that I've always been passionate about. Something I really love is sharing books with students, teachers. It's just so important. One of the number one factors in a student's success is whether or not they enjoy reading. And the best way to enjoy reading is to figure out what you like to read. So hopefully, you can think of a moment or a book that you really resonated with, and hopefully, you're still a reader today. That's our end goal, right? That we create lifelong readers and learners. So we're very excited to open our library. I gave to you the facts and some of the research. There's a ton of research on why reading is so important. So you each got a little Starbucks double shot of espresso with a fun research fact, so that you can stay up all night thinking about reading, just like I do. One of the things that I think is super hard as a classroom teacher is to stay current with children's literature. And there are so many good books out, and there's so many great topics. And some of these facts talk about how children turn to books to find characters that are like or unlike them, go to places they may never see. I could talk for days about the importance of getting good books in kids' hands. So that's our goal, or one of our goals for this year, is to create and foster a love of reading. And we are so excited to take, I keep looking at you because you're here, so sorry. We're so excited to take that on. Beth Heiser already had every fourth grader in the library checking out books this week, and that staff meeting was left Tuesday. First graders have been in the library, kindergarten's planned. I, it's, it's amazing to see them looking at these books and to have their hands on so many different topics. So we're really excited about that. And I'm gonna continue to try to engage my staff in book talks through fun incentives such as a staff bingo board I gave away. I connected with our PTO, so I was able to give away gift cards to Barnes and Noble and just really creating that excitement about books and current books and keeping those in our students' hands. So really excited that we were able to do that work together this year. That is the second goal. The first goal that we are gonna continue to tackle this year is to make sure that our tier one instruction for reading and writing, I know I'm kind of merging my presentation with our building goals, but you're also gonna continue to look at our reading workshop model and math workshop model and make sure that we're giving that high-quality tier one instruction through our mini lesson and our workshop model and lesson closing. So that's kind of what we're tackling on. I want to tell you about one of my favorite parts of the library, which is our staff select. So there's a picture of it in one of them. But at the end of our staff meeting, every staff member had a chance to go around the library and choose a book that they were really excited about. And then they put these gold stars on a book. And it's one of the sections where students can go. And if they don't know what to read, they can find a favorite teacher and choose the book by them, or maybe see what the art teacher is reading or the PE teacher is reading. So that's it right there. So I brought some books for you tonight, and I'm hoping that you'll at some point choose one that you can write an encouraging note. And I'm gonna pick them up next week and take them back to our library, so that you can be a part of our reading culture as well. But we are so excited to do this work and so excited to see kids in the GRE library again. I know Angie and I have talked about it since I came, so it's just amazing to see it in action. They're so happy. So any questions about the amazing things happening at GRE? Hopefully, you get to at least see their faces, because even behind those sweet masks, you can see their eyes crinkle and you can see the love for books. So we're well on our way.
I just want to thank Kate, and you know, she's kind of glossed over quickly at the beginning, but one of the big challenges with our framework at GRE is that was also our STEM room. And so certainly don't understand kids couldn't give books at all, but it wasn't, and she's got her whole regular opportunity for teachers to take classes in there and actually spend, you know, it's not like you run out and quickly grab a book, but can we actually go in there? And if you remember, the kid just having that time to walk around and touch and look at all the books. And so really excited that our kids are getting a chance to do that. And just appreciate Kate's enthusiasm about reading and really takes that vision and creating that excitement that she's able to do. And then I know her staff does a great job as well.
And I have to give a shout out to Kristen Macklin, too, because all of our books were consolidated in one part of the library. And she came in on the weekend and helped get the books spread out and organized. And then my amazing team at GRE, we took a small portion of our waiver day, and everybody got in there and started doing decimalizing, which isn't even a word, but trying to get the books back in order, because they had been in quite a different order when they were consolidated. So it's just been, it's been really fun. And I think the staff is taking more ownership of that space and feeling comfortable and confident to have kids working in there, whether they're reading a book, working on a reading activity, doing a reading group. It's just been amazing.
It's really the only big space that she has where all of our classes could be, and it's not really been that accessible because of the special spot in there. So I think we have a little room for now to spread out.
Yes, it is.
The new elementary opening.
It is. Well, if you guys don't mind, at some point, taking a second to choose any of the books, I just set them out everywhere. Write a note of encouragement to our GRE students and let them know how much you care and how excited you are for them to get their hands on some great books this year. Thank you.
A bit nervous, Mr. Schneider might be writing which pranks are his favorite.
I may have personally selected.
Pranks, tricks, and practical jokes. I'm already good. I'm sure that I just asked.
I thought that would be a good one for you.
Yeah. My kids appreciate that.
Yes. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, under academics, tonight we have two special guests. Mrs. Penny Spurman, our current college readiness coordinator, and Mrs. Kelly Blumberg, one of our high school assistant principals. And they both have been working, I know, with Jen Young as well, and Angie and some other folks on the county council. I'll tell you all about that in a moment. But on our ever-changing graduation requirements from state levels, I know Jen's mentioned that to you before, so these two I can refer to tonight. Just to give you an update on where things are now, and this is something that we will be bringing back in, featured for your approval, just kind of nervously to you tonight.
So as Angie said, always fun with state graduation requirements. We get to update, I think, almost every year. So some slight changes. Our current juniors and seniors, there's not much of a change. They still have the 20 credits that they have to acquire. They still have to get 18 points on their state testing. There were seven tests that they took at the time. The only difference is that the states allow for military enlistment. They've allowed for college and career readiness. Or they can access what the state is calling permanent graduation seals, at least permanent for now. So those permanent seals are really referring to the class of 2023 and beyond. They still have to get 20 credits. They will still take testing, state testing, in the spring, because Iowa says it's a sure sign of spring that we begin state testing, because that happens every April. This time, though, the state has eliminated the English one, which was given at the end of ninth grade. So now we're down to six state tests. Students, this time, though, they're looking at a qualifying score on Algebra I and English II. And that English II test is typically given at the end of the 10th grade English course. So they'll have to get a qualifying score on the Algebra I and the English II. They will still get to take Biology and US History and, of course, tests. We don't want to deprive them of that fun. But those play a different role. So once they get their 20 credits and they get a qualifying score in those two state tests, they now have to get two seals from a possible 12 variety. And those seals range from everything from performing arts to community service to bioliteracy. I think what the state has really tried to do is look at the broad spectrum of our students across the state and the many talents that they have. It's not just, hey, I can knock out a great score on a test. There are many other ways that I can show that I'm a great contribution to our community and to our state. So those two seal, or those 12 seals are spelled out for you. Nine of them were defined by the state. They gave us three to define locally, and I'll talk about those in a moment. One thing I want to highlight is you'll notice two of those state-defined seals are science and citizenship. As I mentioned, students are still gonna take that Biology test. They're still gonna take US History. If students get a qualifying score on those, if they get a 700 on the Biology test, boom, they get a science seal. If they get a qualifying score on US History and the American Government test, voila, they get the citizenship seal. Those are gonna be pretty easy. I think most of our kids are gonna quickly garner those. Just to give you a little bit of data, 95% of our students typically get a 700 or higher on Biology. And I would say probably around 85 to 91%, it kind of depends on the year and the test, get a 700 or higher on the US History or the American Government. So again, I think most of our students can check those off. But students can acquire as many as they want. They can get all 12 if they so desire. The three that the state left us were community engagement, fine arts, I'm sorry, student engagement, fine arts, and community service. We looked at several districts around the state and what they were asking of students. We also talked with our departments and, as Angie alluded to, our counselors, our admin staff, and talked about, these are basic education requirements. This is the basic level students have to meet for high school graduation. So that's how we came up with the requirements that you'll see outlined on that third page. This language is intended to be flexible, because the state does like to change its mind. And of course, we want to continue to monitor the impact on students and do what's best for them. Our school counselors are gonna be working very closely with all of their students on a graduation plan that they must have. This will be a part of that conversation. They will have those conversations also when they're scheduling the students, who say, hey, I, I love band. I love the performing arts. So they'll work with getting them into those courses, so that they can obtain that seal. Just so you know, the seals, according to the state, must be affixed to the diploma and the transcript. So for every seal a student gets, that's going to appear on their diploma and their transcript.
Any questions come in? As you digest that, if you come up with any questions, please feel free to reach out, because again, we won't be bringing them finalized back to you, because we do, you know, we're a little more than that, so we don't make it official.
Great, thank you, ladies.
Appreciate your time on that. All right, I know you're disappointed, because I'm not duck sports, but I will be sharing the construction report tonight. He's actually out with his mother had surgery, so keep them in your thoughts. So I am filling in for him tonight. Wanted to share just a few highlights with the construction project. First, with our site athletics portion of the project. They're wrapping up the site utilities and grading this month. And the high school concession stand and grandstand will start coming up in November, so that'll be exciting. And again, if you're familiar with that site, with Perry Run Elementary being in that upper southwest corner, this will be on the other side, on the east side, is where that grandstand will be. So you'll start to see the grandstand and concession stand. With the elementary, which obviously just opened this fall, and the central energy plant, they'll be wrapping up that main campus entry sign. If you've driven past, it's kind of empty right now. That will be done in the next few weeks. And we'll be wrapping up commissioning on the elementary school with the HVAC. Coordinators are commissioning agents. That's a third party that comes in to check to make sure that's all running fine. With the high school, the roofing has started over the gym and academic wings in October and will continue through late December and early January. I mean, the chance to tour a couple weeks ago, and much of it in the academic wings is all under, so it's really starting to take shape. The masonry is going up on the walls on the outside, so that gray stone getting covered with some nice red brick. And our final furniture design review session will be happening here in the next few weeks. And we plan on having all the furniture for the high school order by January 1st. Just to give a quick update, then, our high school boiler replacement. This is our current high school. We have two boilers that were original to the building from 1991 that were at the end of life. For those who replace this summer, training just took place for those on October 13th, and they are fully operational and running well, so they're ready to heat. So that project is pretty much done, so we're happy about that. Again, I know it's a little quicker and not quite duck style, but any questions that you can answer for you, or try to answer or take back to duck for you on construction. All right, awesome. That is all I have this evening, unless you have any questions for me tonight. All right, now to the fun parts.
What are recognitions? I haven't done those in like months.
I know. It's great to have pictures tonight.
All right, item seven, the recognitions time. And the first person that we are going to be recognizing tonight is Anthony Rodriguez from General Rosecrans Elementary. Come on up, Anthony. Come on up here in the middle somewhere. I'll, I'll meet you out there, and we'll measure six feet. How are you? Excellent. So, oh, there we go. So this is Anthony, and you play football? He's a fourth grader at General Rosecrans Elementary. He has a brother, Nico, who apparently also plays, well, at least a lot of sports, he's a footballer, too. Favorite hobbies for Anthony? Baseball is your favorite. Indians, Reds?
What was that? We didn't hear that, but Mr. Schneider did not like it.
Sorry to see the Cubs were eliminated. All right. Since you have your favorite subjects in school is math, and your favorite part of the OGRE are the teachers who inspire you and inspire the other teachers and this. When you want to grow, when you, what do you, what do you want to be when you grow up? You do not know yet. Welcome to the club. People that you look up most to are your parents. You say they treat you good, and they're always nice to you. That's awesome. Something that folks don't know about you? You played soccer for two years when you were younger. Now everybody will. Some really strong teachers and principals of your school had some nice things to say about you. Would you like to use a few of them? Although quiet. Although quiet, Anthony is one that others want to follow. In the classroom, he's conscientious of the work to be completed and pushes himself to work above and beyond expectations. In math, Anthony always challenges himself to do better, often reworking a problem and helping his peers to do the same. He's competitive, but mostly with himself, always striving to do better and taking pride when this is accomplished. Another comment, Anthony's a great student at GRE. He's consistently demonstrating integrity in all he does. Whether I see him in the classroom, lunchroom, or playground, he's always exceeding our expectations. So congratulations on all of those, and, well, over here. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to present you with the student of the month of General Rosecrans.
Anthony and mom and dad, we would like to have you just step over next door. Mr. Cooper's gonna get a picture of you for the eagle examiner with your eagle, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we normally put the board member with you, but we want you to go take your mask, so we'll just do the family.
Okay, and next we have August Wilson. So you are, what grade are you?
Sixth.
Sixth grade, okay. Sixth grade at Big Moment Intermediate. And I hear it says, Big Moment Intermediate is very proud to have August Wilson represent our building as student of the month. You're the son of Whitney and Michael, and you have a sister?
Yes.
Okay. And what, what grade is she?
Second grade.
Okay. And she goes to Souters, right? So you know Souters? You are a sports fanatic, so you play all kinds of sports. Tell me all the sports you play.
Cross, baseball, team, and I do alcohol, and I'm not a fan.
You have a favorite?
Um, cross.
Cross? And when you are not playing sports, it says we can find you drinking or playing outside with your sister. You like vacation at the beach with your family, and it sounds like you're a little bit of an outdoorsman. You like to camp and fish and stuff. So English, language arts, is your favorite subject? Yes? And why do you like it?
Just fun.
Yeah. Mr. Pershaw makes it fun, doesn't he? My kids all love Mr. Pershaw, too. It says your favorite this year, because they had informational text projects you did.
What, what did you do the project on? What, what made you decide to do that?
Oh, terrible, I don't know, with the Navy.
Great. And, oh, it says here that that's kind of your goal for the future, too, is to follow your footsteps. You know, it's in the Navy, it's part of your plan right now. And it sounds like that's a good plan. And two, it sounds like you're a pretty good student. You're constantly rise, rises at BWI. You do that by getting your work done, following safety procedures at school, and trying to, um, follow them. Well, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'm gonna present you with the student of the month of Big Moment Intermediate.
Thank you.
Based on Wayne's gesturing, I take it nobody heard that? Oh, I just didn't know. While we were up there talking, if I should have taken the microphone, I didn't think about it. Okay. Perfect. Never mind. I thought you were like pointing to me to turn the mic that way. Sorry. I missed, I misread your nonverbals. All right. That would bring us to item eight in the treasurer's report. Jeremy?
It is definitely great to have the kids back and being able to have recognitions like that. But I'll tell you, when I follow that, it makes my stuff not nearly as exciting. So with that, though, we will, just very quick notes on the financial report. If you were, if you got a chance to look at that, you will see that our revenue is very much down right now. But that, again, just to remind you, as we've talked about the last couple of months, we still have not received our final settlement from the county, which is long overdue from what I would have expected. Usually, it's about a month that it Usually it's about a month that it takes to have that settlement and get final receipt. We're almost two months out. So it is, that is definitely the purpose why we are under in revenue and still waiting. I've reached out to them. I know other county treasurers within the area have, have reached out to our auditor just asking when we are going to be getting that settlement, so we can make sure and have the cash flow. And hopefully, within the next, hopefully by still the end of this week, if not next week, we should have that. And hopefully be back in, in trend with what we would expect when we talk about the financial report next month. Otherwise, we are on track with where I would expect to be at this point in the year, and looking fairly good, so. Before I go on to the second item that I wanted to mention as part of my section, any questions on the financial report?
I guess any feedback from the county on why the delay is taking so long and?
Yeah, what, what I received earlier this week is it was a software issue, and they, they got the numbers that they were supposed to balance against from the treasurer probably about two weeks ago. And I guess they were waiting on a issue with software to ensure that what they would be releasing was correct. It's still, still, it's an answer. I still wish though that we were able to have our funds in our, our bank account and not theirs right now. Other questions?
Jeremy, have you had any individuals from the community reach out based on property reevaluations and questions about that?
I've, I had one individual that emailed me just wanting to know if there was, if I had any estimates on how the, the update would be affecting them. And at this point, I'm kind of still waiting on numbers as well. And it could, it could affect each individual a little bit differently. But remembering that we are on the twenty mil floor, and it does cause increases when property value goes up, so. But I have not gotten too many questions at this point in time.
Do you have any idea what the average increase was?
What we are hearing from the county is district wide. It's between a twelve and thirteen percent district wide. But I know, again, some, some individuals may end up being higher and some would be lower to kind of balance and get to that twelve to thirteen percent. Yep, sure. Other questions? All right, the second item there is being called the Big Walnut or B W Growth Forum. And just wanted to share with you, as I'm part of the chamber, and as part of that, we had a conversation with a, some county representatives. And it got several members within, in the chamber kind of excited and wanted to try to kick up conversations on economic development and just, as being said, smart growth. So there is a partnership with the chamber and the Delaware County Economic Development, with the school districts being a member of that as well to be part of those conversations. Those, and again, the focus is, is going to be around discussing how we can have smart growth. And that means a mix of both commercial and industrial, along with residential growth. And kind of trying to, we, Big Walnut has tried to have some of those economic conversations just to make sure the, the townships and villages within our boundaries are trying to share what is going on in each individual's area and how that can, we can all kind of share and work together. So those will be, will be kicking off again in initial meetings with four different groups are going to occur, planned to occur, I should say. I don't think the invitations have gone out, but that is on Monday, November 9th. The business community and developers will be one meeting on that, and that will be at 7:30 a.m. is when that's planned. And then civic organizations, public service, and community leaders would be also on the 9th at noon. 7:30 a.m. is talking with the townships, and that's on Friday, November 13th. And then villages and cities would be at noon on the 13th. Now, these are, invitations are going to go out. It's not just a everybody come, but trying to start those with the key members of the community in our different municipalities. So, wanted to share that with the board, and I do plan on attending as a representative of the school district for all of those meetings, but wanted to also share with you guys when that was. So if there was another board member or two to, that would like to attend that as well, wanted to make sure that you were aware of those. Other, other questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Not really a question, but just happy to see that there's another attempt to try to bring everyone together. Had the opportunity at lunch today to talk to a couple of those county folks. And, you know, I think the reality of it is, is that while certainly all the townships, villages, and cities kind of within our districts, you know, have to compete for projects and things of that nature, they're also plated off of one another very often by those developers that are coming through. And I think the more that we can all get on the same page and work together, just makes it for a better, a better community overall. So I appreciate the chamber taking the initiative to try to start those conversations.
Absolutely, I agree. And that is all I had for tonight.
All right. Item nine is select the board policies, and we have none of those tonight. So we'll go to ten and board members' items of interest. And Mr. Ross, you are batting leadoff.
Well, thank you. As mentioned by Ms. Hamburg earlier, yesterday marked the last day of the first grading period, which as everyone at the high school agrees flew by. Especially as the senior went very fast so far. A couple of things that happened in the past month. Student council ran a change drive to raise money to go along with 150 meals to donate to a homeless shelter in Columbus. So that was a good project to run. And most things are getting back to normal, but COVID friendly at the same time. So, yearbook portraits for seniors were taken, but the panoramic is still being planned because we cannot be close to each other with our masks off. Drama Club is not able to do a show this, for this fall because of the capacity of the auditorium. So they are filming SNL type skits and going to share those. And the sophomores and the juniors took the P S A T earlier this week, which is a scholarship qualifying test for the juniors. So hopefully they did well. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Sherri?
I just wanted to take a minute to thank everyone who's been involved in working so hard to make the fall sports happen successfully. You know, in my family, we have three active kids, a soccer player, a middle school volleyball player, and a high school marching band. So it's been a busy fall. Not quite as busy as normal, but it, it's felt really nice. And I know that not only do the, the kids really appreciate being able to have the opportunity, but the families do as well. And I, I think everyone's been just really appreciative and, and, you know, has responded well to all of the safety protocols put in place. You know, I think, I think we're seeing now there's some cases kind of on the uptick. And I know, I was reading and hearing some podcasts today about in Europe, they're seeing big surges and having to make some temporary shutdowns and things. So just encourage everyone to continue to be really smart. And as we move indoors with the weather getting colder, just, you know, use a lot of precautions and hopefully we can get through full seasons of winter sports too. Because I know it's, it's really important to all of these kids, so.
I could add to that, Sherri, something that maybe, remember something I wanted to share. I was talking with Brian Sutton, our high school athletic director, and I think we shared before with the board that we've had compliance notes from the Ohio High School Athletic Association come in and observe, and then they give you a, a report on all these different areas, how well you're following protocols. And we get emails each week on what the general pass rate for some of which is our on each of those standards. And they're usually forty percent, fifty percent, and we've had, we passed all of ours. So I'm just really proud of, and that's, that's a reflection on the entire community following what we've actually do, whether they want to or not sometimes. So just really appreciate everybody's hard work to echo what Sherri said.
Thank you. Doug?
Pass.
Steve?
Thanks. We've heard it said so many times that as the community goes, so goes the schools, or as the schools go, so go the community. And often that's been with relationship to levies and whatnot. I think to build off of kind of Sherri's point, it's been very much appreciated. We've seen our superintendent shared with us an email from a community member as a sign of appreciation. Not sure that those types of things always come in. Often we say that, or it's said that you hear the negative before you hear the positive. So many folks want to share their appreciation for what this district and our staff is doing. I think about some of the districts kind of to our south. You know, whether it's a striking situation, or whether it's a hybrid education situation, or anything like that, when Mr. Ross talks about the end of the first quarter, athletics starting, contingency emergency plans, a new way to do parent-teacher conferences, new expectations for every student in classrooms, the athletic components. The fact that as our community goes, so go our schools has probably never been more evident. That partnership of kind of a common expectation, whether we want it or not, the opportunity to see that be successful is playing out every day. So I just want to say thank you to all involved. And as I have kind of done so every step of the way, just give my appreciation to the superintendent and her leadership team for kind of the efforts that they've let in there.
Thank you. Leon?
I'm kind of going to sound like a broken record too, just because, again, it was nice getting the letter from the community member. And just a huge thanks to the administration and the staff and the teachers for everything, and the students for their continued efforts to keep our kids in school. And just echoing what Steve and Sherri both said, that, you know, the way the community goes, so go the schools. And just to continue to make those smart decisions, because I think all of us as parents have found out what's important, and what's important is making sure our kids are in school and getting them there every day, and that they're able to do the things they love. And I told somebody the other day, I would wear a mask 24 hours a day if it means that I get to see my kid go to school and participate in sports. And I just hope that members of our community will continue to keep that in mind and make good choices so we can keep our kids in school. Thank you to the teachers who did parent-teacher conferences this last week. We participated in one via Google Meet, and it was really very nice that we were able to do that from home and have a chance to chat with that teacher. And also I'd like to say good luck to all of our teams that are participating in postseason tournaments. So, that's starting, so go Eagles.
Yeah, so I guess for me likewise, I'm, I don't know if you had told me in July that we'd get through the first quarter of the year with everybody in, in session and no interruptions. I probably would have been happy and run with that. And I guess maybe I'm feeling greedy now, and I'm looking to try to do the rest of the year. And so hopefully what we've seen so far is proof that if we are focused on those things that many of you spoke of and collectively working together, we can make that happen regardless of the things that are going around us. One other thing I want to mention, kind of along the lines of Jeremy's discussion, the Big Walnut Chamber in launching the, the Growth Committee and trying to look at things in the area is kind of interesting timing. Today I spent my lunch hour with the Delaware Chamber, and Alex Fisher from the Columbus Partnership was there. And the discussion was about economic development. And one of the important points, or two really important points that are really germane to us, I think, one is about how, I think the way he put it, the, the new differentiator in economic development is workforce. And the role, I think, that we start at a, at a, at an early onset and playing to help provide that workforce for a growing community. Not just the Big Walnut community, but the Columbus area in and of itself is an important role that we play that I appreciate hearing some of the things like we talked about tonight, even though they were kind of driven by some state guidelines in terms of other options outside of academic options in terms of graduating. I know those things that we've always supported and we've always encouraged along the way, so it's good to see that. The second thing that really stuck out to me, and it is kind of the discussion of kind of what kind of development happens in an area. And the question to Mr. Fisher was really around what, what's the best practices that you've seen in terms of how an area gets to develop, kind of the way it wants to develop? And I thought it was interesting that he, he kind of used the metaphor that you have to only have a product to sell. And he talked about places that have built things like spec buildings that are kind of ready for businesses to move in, and having sort of that product on the shelf that allows an organization to come in and, and from a commercial development standpoint, be able to come in and move into an area. And I really want to just take that moment for any of our other local government officials that are out there listening to, you know, have that conversation or think about some of the efforts that we're making in infrastructure and things of that, in that manner, and how we can make an investment in our community to put a product together to attract a diverse tax base, one that's not just built on residential homes or multifamily dwellings, but one that can be truly diverse in terms of commercial and industrial use as well, and investing some of our tax dollars in our efforts to actually put that infrastructure in place. And Mr. Fisher's word, having a product to sell, I think would go a long way to do that. So just throw that out there from some of the things I heard over lunch today. It's kind of nice to be back on the rubber chicken circuit a little bit, so. All right, item 11 is public participation. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not considered a public community meeting. It's a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. And there's reference criteria in the agenda for public participation. I don't see any members of the public in, in the audience here. Did we receive anything electronically to be read in, comment wise? Okay. Then we will move on to item 12-1. It's recommended the board approve the following donations. $180 donated to the Big Walnut High School yearbook from Kroger, a grocery cart donated to the Big Walnut Intermediate School by Kroger, and $100 to G R E donated by the Middlefield Grant. That'll go to the principal's fund at G R E. Can I have a motion, please? Thank you, Steve, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sherri. And thank you to everyone for your generosity and continuing to contribute and help out our schools.
All right, Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorf?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 13, the Human Resources Report. Say that three times fast.
Good evening. Pretty straightforward report for you tonight. There are four items asking for your approval. Resignations in that 13.1 item. Under 13.2, there's a replacement positions under the classified contracts. 13.3, the supplementals for the winter athletics. And then under 13.4, we have just a request for extending a leave of absence due to student teaching for a staff member. So that's everything, pretty quick here. Any questions?
Go ahead, Steve.
It's all right.
I didn't really have a question about any of the items here, but I know early in the, in the quarter, we were talking about needs for substitutes and just kind of that balance. And I just thought, since we're kind of here and have been talking quite a COVID quarter poll, could you kind of comment on what we've seen so far?
Yeah, we, we have seen a decline in actual sub-fill rates. So we actually just got a report, we get a monthly report from our E S C. So we actually just got a report, we get a monthly report from our ESC that supplies our substitutes. They actually go through them as far as the hiring piece and then we pay the service for the, for the A-SOP and the subsystem. We, last year, the month of September, we were at eighty-five percent fill rate. We had about six hundred and eighty absences last year in September. This year we were down to about five hundred and sixty absences, so a lot less absences, which was helpful. And we were at an eighty-two percent fill rate. So we did see a, a drop, it wasn't quite as drastic as some have seen. So appreciate again, most of those subs are coming from our own community, so it's very helpful to have our subs. I will say though, it certainly has presented some issues where we've had principals having to cover classrooms, our instructional tutors, instead of doing small groups, have had to jump into some classrooms. We, we have had some of those situations arise and we've, we've prepared for them as best as we can, but it certainly is, you know, it does, does present some challenges for us.
Thanks, yeah, it just popped in my head since we were talking about that out tonight, so.
Did you have something, Steve, I felt like I cut you off.
No, I, I didn't see one of the attachments, I apologize. I printed out my agenda before. Maybe it was fine, so sorry. Yep, thank you.
Anything else from Mark?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen one, it's recommended the Board approve the following resignations. Kelly Brooks, Kalen Yankee, or Yankel, can't talk it out. Thank you. Austin Geiger and Kristy Barnett. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Leanna. Comments? I think we're ready to vote.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item thirteen two, it's recommended the Board approve the following classified contracts. Kelly Brooks, BWHS Teaching Assistant and Tiffany Von Almen, BWIS Food Service Worker. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sheri. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Jeremy?
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item thirteen three, it's recommended the Board approve the attached supplemental athletic contracts, pending receipt of background checks and all necessary documentation for the 2020-2021 school year. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I think that was Leanna and Sheri snuck in for the second. That's okay. It's better to have more than none. Any questions or comments on thirteen three?
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item thirteen four, it's recommended the Board revise the leave of absence for Jarrett Wampler from December fourth to December eleventh, 2020. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sheri. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Jeremy?
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item fourteen, to schedule the next board meeting. Next board meeting will be November twelfth, 2020, seven thirty AM, right here in the same location. And then we'll be meeting again on the nineteenth in the evening at six thirty that following week. Both of those meetings will be streamed, is that correct, on our district website? Item fifteen's Executive Session, fifteen one I should say. It's recommended the Board enter executive session to consider the employment appointment of a public employee or official. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Leanna.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us online tonight. We do not anticipate coming back into public session to take any action. Thank you very much and have a good night.